Thank you, Mackenzie.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, welcome back, everyone. We, it is 10:30, 3:00. And we're gonna start with the Housing Authority. I invite you guys up to the table. And I know that Mark's not here. I mean, he's here, but he's not in that room. Do you guys feel comfortable going, moving forward without Mark in here? Are you good?
I'm all right, yeah.
You're good?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Becky Cronkles, Chairperson of Mason County Housing Authority. And this is Chris K., our soon-to-be board member. George Blush, our long-term board member. April Mightby, she's trying to get on Zoom. She's the vice chair. And so, we come before you. I have two MOUs. And the first is to continue using public health conference room for our meetings. And for them to provide clerical support to take minutes for our meetings, which they have been doing. The girl that was doing it when I'm maternity leave, and she decided not to come back. So they'll have to find somebody to fill in her shoes. This has been in effect for years. Like, the most recent one I can find in the boxes and boxes of records was from 2009. There may be later versions, but who knows? And so, really, the only thing I changed on here is instead of renewing this every year, that this is being in effect until it's superseded. Either by, if the Housing Authority or the Commissioners wants to quit doing this, then they can give a 30-day written notice. I think you guys have copies, right, of these?
Mackenzie, are these the...
They have, you should have copies.
Okay, okay. All right, yeah, perfect, thank you.
Those are the ones that have been reviewed by Tim.
Okay. I, I wrote them, and then they were reviewed by Tim and I don't know who else. And then she sent me in. So, the second request is we're asking the county Commissioners to pay our executive director's position salary for up to the next five years. And I'm gonna give a little history of where we were, where we're at now, and where we're trying to go to. Just 'cause I know, some of you know where it was, but some of you are new. George became the chair in 2022, and he inherited a housing authority that was in horrendous condition. Many of the units were unlivable and unsafe due to lack of oversight by the previous board and management company. George and Dan, who is snowed in, or he'd be here, spent a lot of time and money getting the drug dealers out, the people making drugs in the units. Nobody's paying rent. So they, and they did a fair jo, a great job at doing that. A state audit hadn't been done in six years because the state couldn't get any cooperation from the board. We inherited around $1 billion of unpaid debt. We were forced to sell two of the four units to stay afloat. We sold them to companies who had to keep them low income. But, for example, Neyland Park had like a $500,000 balloon payment coming up, and we didn't have the money to pay that, so they would have foreclosed. So, in order to keep low-income housing in Mason County, we sold the properties. I started on the board 2023, became the chair 2024. We made minimal profit from the sale of Neyland Park. We made a small profit from Pine Gardens. Cascade Management was a management company, and they did no recertifications on subsidy through HUD or rural development, meaning there was no money coming in, federal money coming into these properties. And, so now we have AdWest, and they're finally in the positive financially. We used the money from the sale of Pine Gardens. We put on new roofs, we repainted. Every unit is remodeled, exception of three that somebody just moved out, and we have to get all three of them. And so, this costs a lot of money. We had a unit over in Goldsboro where they're making fentanyl inside. It costs us $36,000 'cause you gotta get the drug people in there. You gotta do all this stuff, right? And they had to strip it down. So this is where a lot of the money went to. When we sold Pine Gardens, we had to leave some of the money in escrow account for the new owners because they're still trying to get back payment of subsidy from HUD. It's been, as George tried for years, he can attest to. And so now we've, everything, all the apartments are livable, almost 100% occupied, except for the three that just moved out. We've paid off all the back debt. We've paid a lot to attorney fees. The financials haven't been done in years, so we had to pay a lot of money to an accountant to get us all caught up.
We use the same account that you guys use in order to make sure that everybody was on the same page.
Cascade Management then took us to court to sue us for back pay. And Dan went through boxes and boxes of record and gathered all this information, and he attended court. And the outcome was they had to pay us for money that they took from us illegally. And we had a good case, but we didn't choose to pursue it because of the cost, you know, how many millions of dollars in legal fees, which we don't have. And they would never have the money to pay it anyway. So, the, we did have the audit from 2017 to 2021. It was, nothing passed, it was awful. We're in the middle of one right now, and they're doing 2022 and 2023. 2022 is still under Cascade, so we expect to take some hits. 2023, we hope that it's better. But it cost us $18,000 to pay the state to do these audits. So, Pat, and so going forward, it was determined that on Fairmont Cove Apartments, there's enough land that we could build more new units. We hired an engineering company. They did all the initial assessments. Went with us to the city of Shelton. We met with the city of Shelton, and it's all been approved. And these units will be for low income, not subsidized housing, okay? So, Mason County has a big need for housing, right? And so, this is our first step in trying to provide the housing, not that it's needed, right, but a little bit going forward. So I was working with the Department of Commerce, and they have a technical assistant group out of Office of Rural Housing and Farm Working that will provide all the techno, technical assistance from the beginning to the end, from help us get funding through the whole process. The Department of Commerce pays them, the first step, up until the build. Once the construction begins, they're, they'll be paid from Department of Commerce out of the money that we would receive. We had a meeting with them last week, and we may, they suggested, because to build 20 units or 100 units is the same amount of work, right? So, they're gonna meet with us and provide some training, but their suggestion is to actually proceed with up to 120. So, we may do that. I mean, they're gods unto us, because all of us are like, oh, right? And so, here these guys are that can, can help with this. So we need a paid position as executive director to oversee this project, to make sure the management company, I mean, look at the past, what happened when there was no oversight. Everything went to hell, right? These are what, we found all the records at Pine Gardens in their maintenance shed in boxes and boxes from 1970. They had people's birth certificates and driver's license and everything. And Dan and I did. So any records we have left, we had to dig out. We've destroyed all that. So I think based on the past history of the Housing Authority, it's sufficient evidence why a paid executive director is necessary to ensure the Housing Authority is successful. It's a lot for a volunteer board to do. We're not all that as committed as some of us. And we hope to do more of these type of projects in the future. I hate public speaking.
Oh, you did great.
And this is what, if you guys, I got, if you guys want to see that.
All right, so, so you're requesting that we find a person to staff the meetings?
Yeah, to take notes, yeah.
And then also, a person, or 85,000?
Cost of living.
Thank you. I should put my glasses on, I can read it better.
We currently pay Dan 85,000 a year. I have an employment contract, but I didn't bring that. He gets two weeks paid vacation plus, what is the state law? It's four hour, or eight hours for every 40 hours worked for sick leave? I forgot exactly what it is.
Okay.
I had to look it up.
Well, I did talk to Dave Wyndham to see if we could find funding out of some grant that they get. That way, it's not coming out of our general fund. And there, and it just so happened that, like, the following day, something came from Commerce saying there was money available for this type of work. I don't know if you know about that, Melissa?
I do.
Okay.
Supplemental fund.
Right, right. And so, we, we do have, if the Commissioners are thinking about this, we, I did find money to, to do this.
So, how long is that money good for?
Through June of 2025, so this year, June 30th, 2025.
That's one year.
From today, so it's about five months.
And you think this would qualify?
I would have to look at all the allowable expenses, but I believe it would.
Dave said that it would.
It would.
Yeah.
So that would cover us for six months?
Yes.
Well, if it covers for one year, if we did a full contract for the one year of 85,000.
Right.
I thought you said that the funding was good.
It ends, June 30th, 2025. But we've had it for, it's good for the full, yeah, from July for 2024.
So perhaps, in the beginning, maybe you're looking for one year for the beginning while we figure out how to do the rest of the years? Or what, what do you think?
Right, well, and many times, I think that this money does get, coming from Dave, this money is redistributed or avail, yeah, yeah. And, and so, and then in looking at some of the others, I'm like, God, man, there's, that's another story.
We're asking for five years because we expect it takes not longer to build something. We, and we hope, right?
Unless we build, it'll be self-sufficient. We should be able to.
Yeah, and by then, then we would be more self-sufficient.
And so we do have this in here saying that we could look at it again every year.
Yeah, that works too.
I'm trying to remember what's that.
Yeah, anywhere of you, yeah, to look at where we're at. Sounds good to me. You have a problem with that?
No.
However, we do it is put our budget that way. So that's the thing I, right? Things may get a little tighter around here. If we were to set it up for two years with us looking at it at the end of the second year, this way we guarantee some monies for two years. Then on the third year, we look at it during the second year to see if we have the funds available to continue.
So, and you want to change the MOU to two years instead of one?
Two years guaranteed, but we would look at the.
The renewal at the second year.
Yeah, well, you could be five years, but you review it after two. Guaranteed for two.
That's why we make sure it's in our budget for the first two years. We find out if we have the money for the first one, which we're gonna need this year, 'cause then we see we're at it for two years, but they need some type of consistency in order to do something. So two years would be it, and then they look and talk to us for the third year, and we get it approved early.
Yeah, so it does have that in the, in the MOU already. It says for the next five years to pay for the salary, and then Mason County will review this agreement each year.
We set it up for the two years. With a three-year, we up.
So you get rid of the five, you put a three?
Well, it's still, it's still.
You go up to five years, but.
Yeah, it just, you don't have to come back in for another.
Next year, we just, you'd say, you don't have to come back next year.
Otherwise, this way.
In two years, yes.
If something happens and we don't continue, 'cause we don't have the money, it don't continue. But if, if we do have the money, then we can extend the contract. It seems like that's how we would do it normally with somebody anyway. So Dave, you think that money will be there for more than one year?
Why?
Just say yes, Dave.
The money from the Housing Authority for their.
That's what we talked about.
I think we could allocate a year. If we do a contract, we could allocate a year. Pay it now, walk.
That's what I was saying, please.
My crystal ball does not go out past July 1st.
So, that, and that's why I was saying too, we're guaranteeing one out of the general fund if they can't get it. That gives them some consistency at least while they're putting it together. And then we look at it after the second year to extend it. If we have the money, well, he finds another way to do it.
If we can find grant funding, I would rather do that than take it out of the general fund.
Yeah, this wouldn't be out of the general fund. But.
No, if, if.
And I would think that the executive director would also be responsible for grant writing and fundraising as part of the executive director's position.
Who's going to enforce that?
On their board.
I know, just telling.
So, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to build more housing. And in order to build more housing, we need to get funded till the housing's built. So, we have, we're looking at.
We are, we have a techno, we are in partnership with a techno, technical assistant group who is helping us with funding to apply for grants through Department of Commerce in other areas on board already. And they're gonna come to one of our meetings, and if any of you wanna come and have a chat with them and listen to them, you're more than welcome.
Yeah, what I'm just saying is, I wouldn't want it into the contract because that's something that we would have to enforce from that point on. It seems more realistic if we set it up for a two-year. One year we go through this way. Hopefully, you'll have for the second year that we revisit on third.
The other thing we could do is roll this organization into all the other housing organizations as we do our request for bids, request proposals.
RFPs.
So just put it right in the RFP process with everybody else. And typically, that's what we do with NGOs.
Yeah.
And when does that, when does that go off?
So we're starting that process right now. So, by June 1st, no, June 30th, we have, we're supposed to have all those nailed down sign, really by June 1st, probably.
To be effective July 1st.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you set it up for the two years, we take the first one out of that. We have them go through the cycle. It may already be paid for for the second year, but if not, we still give them the continuity to have two years in a row and come back with a, a third-year extension for the rest of the five years. Or, we drop it off completely and just have it run through that system if it's established. This way, they at least have the, the continuity to, to keep it going.
Well, we don't want them to go away.
Well, historically, just to let you know.
The assurance that they're gonna be covered for two years.
As you already know, it's no connection with us whatsoever. One of the reasons why we put through the monies we did is, one of the things I was faced with is, I don't want to be a landlord. I don't want the county to be a landlord. And if you guys were to have collapsed, we would ended up with properties that we didn't want to maintain. Even though we have no authority, we have no, the only authorities we have is to agree with your board member. That's it. There's no connection. The county doesn't run it, and it's a county funds, it's its own entity. But with that, I'm comfortable with doing a, a two-year guarantee for them. First year, we get, we know we'll have money through that other entity. Second year, we may have to pay out of the pocket, but we ask you to go through the process to get into his cycle. And then it may go on for whoever knows how long.
And it, it does specify that we're donating the money. So it's not, we're not investing or buying in any ownership, no.
Nope.
So it's clearly a.
Yeah, I didn't want to, 'cause you have the option donating or us paying you back, and I don't want to promise to pay you back because.
But if they close, we get the properties, that's, that's in their charter. And again, none of us wanted to be landlords, the county at least. Especially back in the beginning, when the buildings weren't uninhabitable.
There's a big need for affordable housing. And this is a step forward to achieve that goal. I mean, it might be a small step, but at least it's movement, right?
100 new units? How amazing would that be?
That's what we're gonna shoot for.
So we're trying to find property for that. But, like, we already have the, we're up to the groundwork study part for the 20 units. So, you know, we're moving in the direction that we need to go to in 20 units to be able to help fund us where we need to be in the future.
Right.
As I said, without it, who knows what the next step is, but hopefully.
I love that.
We can make it work.
Okay. Good.
Anything, Chris?
Well, Yul's seen some paperwork for me. My interest, of course, in engineering background and going into construction phase, offering my services to the Housing Authority.
Yeah, he wants to be on our.
Get through the construction.
He wants to be on our board.
Yay.
So we're gonna change the line item three, or number three A, to say something to the effect, "We agree to donate $85,000 per year for the next two years to be reviewed on a continuing basis for up to five years."
Yeah.
Something worded like.
Somehow, we need to get the verbiage in there that we'll be trying to use those funds first. And we want you to apply to utilize. The RFP process.
Yeah, and will you note, you, you sent out a big notification too.
Yeah, so those, the process is putting us together now. So all of our current pass-through folks will be getting notices for RFP things. In some years, we've done, and I'm actually renewed, but that's, that's, we're getting away from that, going back to the RFP process.
I think that's a good idea.
Even if you don't want to guarantee the two years, right? That's work.
But if we optimize through someplace else, that would be great.
Yeah, then we'll just continue with the five.
That would be throw all our NGOs on the same footprint.
Right.
So do we move this forward for tomorrow's?
Oh, not for tomorrow's, in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
They don't need it immediately, right?
No, no.
Yeah, we're good.
So let's, let's get the verbiage, have our attorneys look at it with the verbiage briefing in on Monday. You don't need to be here. It's just for us to say, okay, we agree with that, and put it on the agenda for the, the week after that. Does that work?
Yeah.
This way, you'll at least have a couple of years to, as we figure it out.
Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate you guys.
Again, you've done incredible work. It's been hard at times. Remember, I was there, there, there were so many uninhabitable rooms that it was crazy. I still have pictures of them. Whoever wants to see it, it'd be seconded by someone.
We have a whole bunch of pictures of how it was.
You don't want to see it, believe me.
I saw a few of them.
So I have one of the question on the, on the first one. This may be a question for Mark, but I'll ask you because it's your presentation. Do you have an idea what the cost will be for the clerical agreement?
No. Sorry, I don't.
Don't we currently do it now?
No.
They did until recently, and then they just pulled them on us.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And they were doing it, and you're, the, she went on maternity leave? What was her name? And then she decided not to come back, so.
So history-wise, this has happened a few times. It's come in, we're working with it, some animosity or something happened, and it goes out, that was before you, at the first one.
And we've had some issues since I've been there in that, you know, we had somebody staffing it, and the board was actually asking our staffers to sign contracts and do that piece. And that's why I said absolutely not, I pulled them.
Yeah, I remember that. That was a while ago, though. But you have a director, so that's your person now. But back then, nobody had one board member, is all they had. Kathy Haig, one board member.
Now we have to code their time to, to fund. So typically, most of our NGOs on their staffing do it themselves. Their secretary of the organization does the, the protocols of minutes and does the reports. This would be the only one that we do. Is that correct? Most of us, the only one that would, that we would staff.
Correct. Most people have a board member that they appoint as a secretary.
Yep.
Maybe in the future, we'll get more, more members to show up. And that's a possibility, but right now, it's usually three of us.
Well, and also for history, again, there was a point where they had nobody, and that's how they got into the situation as it was.
Well, and the state auditors hit us for that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you can try and do it with a board member, but if they leave, then you end up with nothing.
Yeah.
At least for a couple of years. How long was this, was that agreed for?
Why don't we do this for the two years that we're doing the 85?
I'd be supportive of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, agree with that.
And we'll figure it out.
So, so just to make sure I said, Commissioners are asking that we would provide them with a space to meet in in one of our facilities and clerical support for two years. And then a guarantee of two years for an executive director salary up to 85,000. And the first year, we'll try and pay for out of the supplemental fund that we can receive. And the second year, if there's not additional supplemental funds, we'll, we're guaranteeing it with general fund.
Yes, but we want them to apply through that process, the RFP process.
Oh, yeah. So apply as a, as apply as one of our nonprofit organizations.
Yeah, 'cause it could turn into five, seven years, you don't know.
Good, oh, yeah, well.
Construction, especially the city of Shelton, good luck.
Yeah, I know.
Nothing personal, Bear, but it takes a while.
Yeah. All right.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Go to Raven.
Or if you just draw, if you already got a filled out, just give to her. She'll take it.
Mackenzie would love to.
She needs to catch off everything now.
All right.
Oh, your hand's in, okay.
Mr. McGuire.
Hi there.
How are you?
Do you know exactly?
I do.
Bring up whoever you'd like.
It's gonna happen in a while. I'm just trying to sort of.
I, I realized that last week.
Hey, Commissioners, good morning. I'm very well. My purpose here today is to be emcee, and that's it. I'm gonna just want to introduce some people. First, Judge Teresa Butler, who as court commissioner, therapeutic courts were her baby, and she can't let go.
What was that, what was that, how about the first modern one to, to be from here?
First local judge, yeah.
Yeah, that's, to me, I thought that was really cool.
First Mason County-born Superior Court Judge in the history of Mason County.
That's pretty cool to me, I don't know.
Yeah, pretty cool. And then the staff of therapeutic courts, Sarah Armstrong, who's gonna be running the PowerPoint, Susan Frazier, and Julie Hansen, the manager, who's gonna start.
Hi. Is it fine for me to stand here?
Knock yourself out.
Do we have a microphone over there?
We do, we do.
Okay, so as Patty said, my name's Julie Hansen. I'm the therapeutic court program manager for Mason County. It is an honor to be here today to share the important work we are doing through Mason County Superior Courts. These courts represent a transformative approach to justice, offering individuals and their families an opportunity to break free from the cycles of addiction, mental health challenges, and criminal behavior. In this presentation, I will introduce you to the four therapeutic courts, Veterans, Mental Health, Drug, and Family Recovery Court. Each of these programs serves a unique purpose, but they share a common mission, to provide participants with the structure, accountability, and support they need to reclaim their lives and contribute to a stronger, safer community. For three decades, there has been a growing movement to transform the way the justice system. For three decades, there has been a growing movement to transform the way the justice system responds to individuals with substance use and mental health disorders. Rather than continuing the revolving door of addiction and related crime, treatment courts help to break the cycle by holding individuals accountable while connecting them with the treatment and support needed to change their lives. Therapeutic courts represent a groundbreaking shift in this approach. These programs are built on decades of research and are grounded in evidence-based practices. Their success is the result of rigorous study and careful implementation of proven methods. This approach is no longer an experiment. With approximately four thousand treatment courts nationwide, it has become the most successful justice intervention in our nation's history. Serving over a hundred and fifty thousand participants annually. For the first part of this presentation, I will discuss our criminal therapeutic courts. The criminal therapeutic courts are specialized courts that give the opportunity for the participant to engage in a closely monitored program that addresses the reasons for their involvement in the criminal justice system. This provides a way to build lasting health and recovery with the goal of having their charges dismissed and avoiding further involvement in the criminal legal system. In order for a criminal defendant to be considered for therapeutic courts, they must first take responsibility for their conduct and enter a guilty plea. After the guilty plea is entered, the defendant can submit a therapeutic court application to the prosecutor. The prosecutor then reviews the case for eligibility and, if appropriate, will refer the applicant to the therapeutic court team to be screened for entry. It is important to note that criminal charges involving serious violent crimes and sex offenses are not eligible for our programs. Once the therapeutic court team has the referral, the applicant then completes a series of evaluations such as substance use disorder, mental health, and domestic violence to determine the needs of the individual. After the evaluations are completed and input from the team is considered, the judicial officer makes the final decision of suitability and, if appropriate, allows the defendant to enter one of the three criminal therapeutic courts. Veterans, Mental Health, and Drug Court. Veterans Court is uniquely tailored for criminal defendants who are veterans or active-duty military personnel. While all criminal therapeutic courts feature a team that includes a judge or commissioner, prosecutor, multiple treatment providers, defense attorney, case manager, and program manager, this court has the added support of a veterans' justice outreach coordinator and a veteran peer mentor. Since its inception in twenty sixteen, there have been sixteen successful program completions. Approximately fifty percent of the seven million individuals under criminal justice supervision meet the criteria for a diagnosis of drug abuse or dependence. Punishment alone is an ineffective response to drug abuse. Failing is a public safety intervention for offenders whose criminal behavior is directly related to drug use. Drug Court offers a more effective solution by providing treatment and close supervision to those individuals who are struggling with substance use disorders. Since forming in two thousand and three, there have been a hundred and twenty-six successful completions. While mental illness is not a crime, but untreated symptoms and limited access to care can lead to involvement in the criminal justice system. Mental Health Court helps close the gaps and provide participants with wraparound care for both mental health and substance use issues. Since establishing in twenty sixteen, there have been twenty-seven graduations. Focusing on too many needs at the same time can overburden our participants and worsen outcomes if they are not prepared to understand or apply more advanced skills or concepts. Therefore, each, each of the courts have a well-defined phase structure that addresses participants' needs in a manageable and effective sequence. Phase advancement occurs when participants have managed well-defined and achievable proximal goals that are necessary for the participant to accomplish the more difficult, difficult distal goals. The first phase of each program focuses on acute stabilization. Some of the requirements include attending court and meeting with their case manager on a weekly basis. At this point, a treatment plan is developed, and among many other things, requirements are established to meet their basic needs. The middle phases focus on clinical stabilization. These phases look very similar to the beginning phase, however, at this phase, many of the participants have moved to a different stage of substance use and/or mental health treatment, so the focus begins to shift to addressing the root cause of the issues that got them into our programs. The final phase focuses on pro-social habilitation. At this point, the participants are supporting themselves financially and have established a strong social network of like-minded people in recovery. Participants are engaged in recovery support activities and have developed workable continuing care and relapse prevention plans to help them maintain their treatment gains after program completion. It is worth noting that each of these phases require participants to participate in frequent, random, observed urinalysis testing. Urinalysis testing is a vital tool that participants can use to demonstrate objective proof of ongoing success while also allowing the therapeutic court team to monitor their progress. The therapeutic court provides clear and understandable advance notice to participants about program requirements, the responses from meeting or not meeting these requirements, and the process the team follows in deciding on appropriate individualized responses to participant behaviors. The court applies evidence-based behavior modifications that are proven to be safe and effective. Responses to positive behaviors such as getting a driver's license, enrolling in school, or completing phases of treatment can include verbal praise, recognition in court, symbolic coins, or small gift cards. In contrast, certain behaviors such as being late to court or missing an appointment with their case manager may elicit such responses as increased supervision, research papers, written reports, or community service. To date, the participants of all of the therapeutic courts have performed over three thousand six hundred community service hours with such local agencies as the Kitten Rescue, Community Lifeline, and Mason County Recovery Cafe. Therapeutic courts benefit the community in several ways. The first of which is cost savings. From data collected from the Washington State Department of Corrections in twenty twenty-two, it was determined that the cost to incarcerate individuals is roughly sixty-three thousand dollars a year. By diverting individuals from traditional criminal justice pathways, the therapeutic courts save taxpayers approximately six thousand twenty-eight per participant. And by providing tailored treatment and support, therapeutic courts help break the cycle of criminal behavior, leading to lower recidivism rates. These courts focus on underlying issues such as substance use disorder, mental health, trauma, or other challenges that may contribute to criminal behavior. By addressing these issues, individuals are better equipped to reintegrate into society as law-abiding citizens keeping our community safe. Like so many others, my substance use issues began with a prescription for OxyContin from my doctor. It did not take long until my addiction caused my life to spiral out of control. And even with tough love and support of my family and friends, I became involved in the criminal justice system. Thankfully, I was the, I was offered the opportunity to enter Drug Court. Drug Court proved to be as rewarding as it was challenging. I worked hard to address the issues that caused my life to fall apart. I went back to college, was offered an internship with the Mason County Public Defender's Office, thank you Peter, immediately following my Drug Court graduation. I went on to obtain my associate's degree, become a full-time employee at the Public Defender's Office, purchase my first home, and eventually become the program manager for the very courts that changed my life. None of these accomplishments would have been possible had I not been accepted into Drug Court, and for that I am forever grateful. You'll see up there, there's my son and I headed to my Drug Court graduation. My mom wasn't able to attend, so she sent a couple of her friends to support me, and uh Vicki Meadows read a very touching letter to me that brought me to tears. Uh, my son and I both graduated from South Puget Sound at the same time, and had it not been for COVID restrictions, we would have walked together, he would have walked with uh athletic achievement and I academic honors. And my son went on to go to Evergreen, there's his um soccer thing from Evergreen. I'm very proud of him, as you can tell. In the next part of this presentation, I will discuss the Mason County Family Recovery Court, FRC, which is similar to other courts I have discussed, however, it has a different focus. When Child Protective Services, CPS, which is part of DCYF, learns of potential child abuse or neglect, they begin an investigation. In serious cases, they will remove the child from the parent's care. A hearing will then be held to decide if removal was proper, and if so, what the parents need to do before the child can go back home. Some of these requirements include drug and alcohol treatment and testing, domestic violence treatment, parenting classes, and mental health treatment. For these cases, the court checks the parent's progress every three to six months. In twenty thirteen, the Mason County Superior Court realized the value of creating a program that would check in weekly, not only with the parents, but also with DCYF. The focus of FRC is somewhat different from the other therapeutic courts. While the other programs typically focus on recovery for the individual, FRC focuses on recovery for the entire family. It considers the well-being of the children, I'm sorry, just as important as that of the parents, with decisions made based on the needs of the family as a whole. Due to its family focus, the cost savings associated with FRC are hard to quantify. When a family is reunited, the state no longer has to pay for foster care, and more importantly, the child gains an invaluable benefit of being in a safe and stable home. Furthermore, the value of helping parents achieve stability and preventing further trauma is truly beyond measure. The FRC team consists of a judge or commissioner, assistant attorney general, parent attorney, youth attorney, case manager, program manager, guardians ad litem, parent allies, treatment specialists, Department of Child, Youth, and Family Social workers, Office of Public Defense Social workers, and, if appropriate, Indian Child Welfare Social workers. All therapeutic alternative programs have one thing in common, they require the participant to comply with conditions such as individualized service plans, case management, and frequent court reviews. The FRC program is designed to quickly connect parents, quickly connect and engage parents in services, motivate compliance, and facilitate progress with service requirements through regular court monitoring. Once the parent enters the program, their progress and compliance with expectations are monitored through a three-phase milestone system. Throughout the duration of the program, the team applies therapeutic responses to improve child, parent, and family functioning. These responses help to ensure children's safety, permanency, well-being, while also supporting participants' accountability and behavior changes. When responding to the participant's behavior, the team considers the cause of the behavior as well as the therapeutic response, the effect of the therapeutic response, not only on the participants, but the children and the family unit. The team recognizes bio, recognizes the biopsychosocial and behavioral complexities of supporting participants through behavior change to achieve sustainable recovery, stable reunification, and resolution of the child welfare case. Since the inception of Family Recovery Court in twenty thirteen, there have been over a hundred and ten successful family reunifications and graduations. One of these success stories is our very own therapeutic court case manager, Susan Frazier.
Hi everyone, my name is Susan. I was born here and raised here in Shelton. Uh, from ten to twenty-five, I was in active use. Around the age of twenty-two, Child Protective Services got involved in my life. My child, excuse me, my daughter was fourteen months old and my son was five. Uh, up until this time in my life, I had a place to live, food on the table, and my children had always been in my care. What I wasn't doing was being present as a good mother for my babies. Once my children were removed from my care, my life went downhill fast. I became houseless and hit drugs harder than I had ever before. And not a single person in my family wanted anything to do with me, and rightfully so. Uh, about ten to eleven months into my case, the department decided they were gonna file termination of parental rights, and it kinda kicked me into gear, looking for anything I could do to get clean and stay clean. My social worker at the time introduced me to our Mason County Family Recovery Court team. I am confident in saying that I hit the ground running with my recovery because of the structure and accountability that the program has. It helped me develop into a productive member of my own life and my community. While in FRC, I was still dealing with my criminal cases. I had been sentenced to go back to inpatient and beyond residential community drug offender sentencing alternative here. My children had just been returned to mine and my husband's care a few days prior to sentencing, and I had just a mere two days to prepare for the next three months, being gone from my family. I could never express the gratitude I had for the Mason County Family Recovery Court team for all they did to support me and my husband and my children while I was away. There were times I didn't feel as if I could go on, but every time I felt that way, my team gathered around me and figured out how best to support me and get through the, excuse me, get through the tough times and come out better than before. I proudly graduated FRC in two thousand and sixteen. And I can say with confidence that I am stable, happy, responsible, and an accountable, productive member of my community, and most importantly, to mine and my children's lives. I am also very proud to say that after graduating FRC, I went on to become the parent ally for two years. Then was hired on as the FRC case manager for another two and a half years, and now I am the case manager for other three therapeutic courts, Mental Health, Veterans, and Drug Court. And the picture I have there, so that is my husband and I, our graduation day. We are the first couple to have graduated Family Recovery Court here in Mason County together, and he was the first man to graduate FRC here in Mason County. And that is our family, that is all four of us on graduation day. My daughter is now twelve, and my son is now sixteen, and that is my mother-in-law who we hadn't seen in years prior to that because of our drug use and still very much involved in our lives today. Thank you.
As you have heard today, therapeutic courts are more than just an alternative to traditional justice. They are a path to transformation, healing, and redemption. They give individuals and their families the opportunity to rebuild their lives, reconnect with their communities, and break the cycles of addiction, crime, and despair. These courts are more than programs, they are opportunities for real change. These stories of success like mine, Susan's, countless others, are proof of the power of accountability, support, and second chances. These programs have saved lives, reunited families, and strengthened our community in profound ways that are impossible to relay in this quick presentation. As someone who has personally experienced a life-changing impact. As someone who has personally experienced the life-changing impact of these programs, I am incredibly proud to serve this community and work side by side with so many dedicated individuals who believe in the power of change. Together, we are proving that justice and compassion can go hand in hand, and transformation is possible when people are given the tools and opportunities to succeed. Thank you all.
Happy to answer, any of us are happy to answer any questions you have.
What's the recidivism rate at the Veterans these days?
I, oh, you know what? I have the number for all three courts. I didn't break it up, but I can break that number up.
You can just send it to me. It's no big deal.
We're at 38% for all four, but I'll definitely break those up.
You mentioned in the Veterans Active Duty Military, how's that jive of military, of the parts that the military has to deal with, because they have pretty strict.
They do. I'll.
How can you perhaps help address that? We've only had one active duty. We were in communication with chain of command. We had blessing from chain of command to provide those services, and if they asked for information, we did have a release from the participant to provide that information to chain of command. There was a separate military action, and then there was the criminal, and we were involved in the criminal side, so it takes good communication with the individual's chain of command.
I'm sure it does.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you for your presence.
Yes, thank you very much for hearing us.
I was at a family graduation reunification ceremony, and first one, we went into a couple. One was during COVID, so everybody was stuck in their rehab, the rest of us were outside. But it is so cool, and what a testament to the things that are happening and the positivity, the changes. Wow. So wow.
Thank you. Yes, these programs are very dear to my heart, and it's just such a privilege to be a part of behind the scenes now. Thank you all so much. Feel free to reach out if you have any questions or want any further information.
Peter still cries about you leaving.
You are so thankful to have us.
I have never been more simultaneously elated and upset than when they poached Julie from me.
I heard the upset part.
Wow, well, it's your turn. Good luck. Good luck.
All right.
If you let me cry, I'll kick you.
I endeavor not to do that at all times.
That's gonna make you happy today.
I think so. I actually filed two briefings. One was for the renewal with tax nurse lease. It was the thing we budgeted for. I'm not sure I need to talk about that too much, but that contract's the easy one.
Good with that?
Get that out of the way. The second one is a little more complex, and it has both a short-term and a long-term section of it. The Indigent Defense Standards still haven't been adopted by the Supreme Court. That's the good news. The excruciatingly nerve-wracking news if you're me, but the good news, because the more time we don't have to deal with those, the better it is for us. That combined with the fact that the 2024 numbers are down, and the prosecutors are still kind of spooling up and getting themselves backed up to a case, makes me relatively confident that we are not going to need the extended number of people in 2025 that we had budgeted for. And so, instead of sitting back and waiting and seeing and, you know, having that money in my budget as a cushion, I figured I'd come here and say, take it and do something else to benefit the taxpayers of Mason County because I probably won't use it. That is for those two positions, and that is for 2025. The longer-term analysis I included is, you know, we shouldn't be resting on our morals with that. That is a for 2025, and it comes with a combination of factors. One, the prosecutors are still not up to speed, and two, we haven't seen anything from the Supreme Court yet. And so, the chances that the new Indigent Defense Standards get enacted effective in 2025 go down every month that we don't see them enacted yet. It is still possible that they enact them and make them as originally intended effective in July, at which point I hope to have enough cases banked up to where I can kind of slide by until the end of the year. I think that's an unlikely scenario, but I'm still in the process of preparing for it. And so, I am relative, I can say with 90 to 95% certainty that I'm not going to need these two positions this year, and if I do need them this year, it will only be for a very small fraction of the year, and it's budgeted for the entire year, so take the money back and do with it as you will.
We're better off just leaving it where it is. The reason why is it could come back to us as unexpected budget authority at the end of the year. We're going to be short on that anyway when it comes to law enforcement because they're filling their positions. So unless we have it, I don't see any reason to do an action, but that's me personally, because if we put it in our pocket, we'll spend it.
That's a decision that's for you. I'm just presenting options here.
And you've always been good about not spending what you don't have to, so I don't have any worries about yours, and that's.
But long-term, and I included the more extended analysis in the written materials, I think the dip in 2024 numbers is most likely due to the lack of prosecutors. They're just the people there, and if you look at the felony numbers especially, that's where we saw the biggest dip, and the places we saw the biggest dip were in the places that they get a referral that sits on their desk and not the one that comes in from the jail. And so, what that tells me is the most likely scenario is somewhere over the prosecutor's office, there's a stack of referrals that they just haven't gotten to yet, because everything else went up a little bit, and those two categories went down.
There is a lag between the sheriff's department, staffing.
Yeah, and so, and that's not to say that anything, anyone did anything wrong. They were short-staffed, and they were doing what they could. And I've spoken with Mike about this. I don't like representing another elected official's position, but I think he pretty much agrees with me on this one, and so, that we're likely to see filings go back up. And so, while I'm here trying to give the money back, or at least telling you, you can take the money back today, I don't. I don't want to put you in a false hope for 2026.
We deal in facts here.
Yeah. The facts, the long-term facts are still very grim when it comes to these updated Indigent Defense Standards.
And that's another thing. If we don't touch it, when it comes time for budget, we have that as the discussion point. It's still in place.
So I know that there are a couple of bills going for the legislature about public defense. One is on the services of public defense. One, I think there's a couple that are scheduled for exec. There maybe there's one scheduled. Anyway, are you keeping an eye on those?
Yes.
Can you let me know if you ever decide to testify on FOMR?
Yes, if I, if I'm going to testify, which I probably will not, unless specifically asked to by this board. I would prefer to avoid that these days, because my wife is working as the chief legislative assistant for the Democratic Caucus in the legislature, and so, we try to avoid any kind of appearance of impropriety on her part by not having me try and influence the legislature. If we, if I am going to testify, and you are going to ask me to do that, then I would need to give proper notice and make sure that boundaries were put in place to avoid that kind of appearance.
Yeah, yeah, just keep.
There is hearings today and tomorrow.
There are, yeah.
5453 Senate bill, there's House Bill 1592 tomorrow, and 5453 is scheduled for exec tomorrow.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, and I think it's a good idea just to leave it where it is.
Okay. I'm not going to fight you on that.
Spend it.
I just didn't want to come to you and say, or I didn't want to hold on to the funds without at least letting you know that I probably won't need them.
Appreciate that.
And if worst-case scenario happens with the Supreme Court, you may need to.
May. I think it's a long shot, but I always try and err on the side of not spending the taxpayers' money if I don't have to.
You have proven yourself to be excellent at that over the years that I've known you.
Yeah.
All right.
Very cool.
If there's nothing further.
Thanks for training somebody up for the courts.
And as far as staffing levels?
We are staffed right now.
Very cool.
We are staffed. We hired our last one at the end of January, so we are staffed, and we have no pending resignations.
That's a good thing.
At this moment in time. We have one that's having some pretty significant medical issues, and I'm not sure how that's going to play out. I don't really want to go public with the details, but it's significant.
Yeah, please don't.
And so, you never know who goes next. But we will.
We never know any department.
That's true.
All right. Good.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Dave.
Okay. Yeah, it's us, yeah.
I'm tired of jumping for me. That's okay. I'll keep on trying.
Good morning.
Morning.
Actually, we're very simple today. So on Friday this week, the 7th, we'll be going out to PUD 3 for our Paul staff meeting. We submitted the agenda of activities to McKenzie. One of those is Kami, who's going to work with us on public records requests and retention and all those happy things. Just make sure everybody's up to stuff, because I was dealing with them this morning before I got here. I had a public records request that we're trying to get clarification on. So we'll be doing that on Friday, and then Melissa.
I just have one really quick item for you, Community Lifeline. So a little bit of background, you already know, back in November of 2023, the board approved a reduction in their funding due to their being on probation status, not really utilizing the tools available through technical assistance, and just having some ongoing compliance and financial issues. They did complete one of the deliverables on their action plan that we put together for them, which was to get their conditional use permit approved for the increase in beds from 35 to 54. So I attached the letter that came from the city, a copy of the action plan, and a draft of the contract amendment approving or restoring 10% of the reduction in funding, which is about a little bit over $4,000, which will go directly to support their overnight shelter aids. So hopefully, with there being an increased capacity, safety is an issue, so being able to staff it overnight with an initial staff person will be really important. This will go towards doing that.
If you find that they've met the criteria for you to do it, you're supportive. I'll be supportive of all.
Any other questions?
Updates on how they've been doing recently on billings?
There's still some challenges. They did have a change in their staffing for who's doing their bookkeeping, so we're continuing to work with them on that. You're familiar. And we're working with them. We had some requests on changing maybe the frequency of how they do their invoicing, and I've spoken with some folks at the auditor's office as well as our finance department to discuss maybe what that might look like. We haven't made changes yet, but if it will help them, then we're certainly considering it.
And that's just for timing for them to have the funds in order to pay their current obligations?
That's great news. I couldn't be happier about some of it. Yes, and so, I did see the letter from Jay from the city, so that's encouraging also because that tells me that the city's actively taking, I mean, I know that they were before, but they're being responsive and that their Community Lifeline is complying with what they're supposed to be doing, especially with the cold temperatures.
Yeah.
Super important right now.
Still need stuff up north.
And they've been doing this from, they've been working on this since 2022?
Well, I mean, increasing the beds, 2020.
Okay.
Yeah, 2020, but the reduction in the funding where this was really like, you must do this in order to get your money back, November 23.
Gotcha.
And I feel like it got their attention, so they did make some changes, so.
Appreciate your help with them.
It's our job.
Any other questions? Nope. Nope.
The other thing I had was, I was on the Hill last week, Thursday, all day, working with the ledge. Really no major asks, just out there keeping our Mason County face in front of everybody, and letting them know what we're doing with public health. And there's one bill that I'm following specifically, and that's Hospital 1034, which puts non-opioid treatment plans on the same footing payment-wise as opioid treatment plans. So, and that's just a, something to push and get payers into that mix, and I'll be meeting with Humana on Wednesday to talk about that some more, about how we get non-opioid treatments at the same playing field as opioids, so.
Okay. Commissioner, do you have anything for Dave?
Do not.
I just have one thing. So at our last LSE meeting for WASAC, I asked Jamie to take a look to see if, because we're handing out tents and sleeping bags and all sorts of other things, and they typically round up in a ditch or someplace else, so I've asked Jamie to take a look and take it to the legislature, see if there could be funding for cleanup of all the stuff that has been left. So if you guys could maybe help me with that, that would be great.
And I have talked with some folks who do that type of work broader than us, and they said they kind of take it like we do with the syringe exchange. If you want a sleeping bag, return it as a sleeping bag. And if you're just going to leave them as solid waste, then you don't get another one.
Yeah, we need to do something because, I mean, Highway 3 up there, that's bad, and then there's a lot that we don't see.
Right. And there's no funding for any of those cleanups.
Which is bizarre. I mean, we're so concerned about the environment, but yet, but yet.
Right, exactly. Well, and I've heard rumors, I'm not sure how firm they are, that could go into a budget proviso rather than through regular legislation, so we'll see what happens there, however it works.
However it works, and just make sure that it's equitable and not King County.
I was with Thurston Mason in behavioral health. We were meeting with EPA last week, and brought this subject up with them, and they said, hmm, that might be something the EPA could fund, so I don't know how far that will go, but they're interested in cleaning up some of these.
Okay, nice.
And some of these places are in a weird mix of, they overlap boundaries, so they're on federal land, they're on the city land, they're on private land, and so it makes enforcement complicated.
Right, but paying for the cleanup is something they're interested in participating in, and that's a big part.
I know WashDOT has done some and has funds dedicated to that, but it doesn't help us in other places.
No, I saw a gentleman, we were on our way to Gig Hardwood, see him with the grain cans, and there was a gentleman cleaning up part of the hillside out there by the, before you get to the yacht club, so I think it was in the city boundary.
The city triangle, yeah.
Right, but it, people are concerned, and I think that this could, it's a unifying endeavor, I think. Anything else?
Another thing, we have 100 of the zip bags, and we've got an R hand, so we'll set that up your way.
Okay.
And we have an R hand spare, too.
Yeah. We'll do a combo event. So we'll do, we'll do, um, um, a combo event. And then I, I talked with, um, my counterpart down at WCA, and they've got a vending machine that they use. And they said it's, it's been a huge success, so I'm gonna see how they did that.
I've seen them, actually. Hey, uh, on the pickup that the commissioner was talking about, if we were to set up a special, I don't wanna say fund as much as ability to go out and do cleanup, other than the major stuff we've talked about, could we use abatement funds for that, for hiring somebody to go out and do some simple cleanup?
If we had abatement funds dedicated, right now with our abatement fund is in the building department.
Yes.
So we haven't, we haven't.
But if we were to move that, do you think it would be an allowed use if we were to move a certain amount to, to pay for that yearly lease?
If, if we, if we do a, a voluntary abatement, it's easy to do. If we have the funds, we can do a voluntary abatement and then, you know, charge it back to their taxes or to the, the property as a lien. That's, that's easily done. It's, whereas involuntary, where it gets really difficult.
What if it's not at a house?
Hey, you've got the Navy, you've got the rail yard.
But we, yeah, we have.
But there's other locations that are just, um, forested properties.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, right. Right.
I, I think it would, it would depend on the landlord.
I think we should maybe consider that and put together our own little group that can go out there, maybe partner with the city, because they have their issues. They've got a client going on right now with the state.
You had that one fellow, Sheldon to the top, who's doing that?
Yep. He might even be, right? Yeah. He disappeared.
Yeah. So, okay, we can work on that.
Okay. And I, I think I've got a meeting coming up at the city soon, so Mark, remind me to bring that top.
Abatement money or cleanup?
Cleanup.
Yeah, a small amount.
And if we can figure out how to, how to do it, even, I mean, if it's not abatement, we can find it someplace else, that'd be great too.
Yeah, it's something I've always wanted to do, but how to control it is the hard part. We've used law enforcement to do it, but this would be something different, perhaps staff or whatever. But they get into a bad situation when they get out there, we know that too, so. Probably have to have health department involved through the whole process.
We can work with the courts too.
Yeah, and that's similar approaches. Mont County uses an approach called, um, a decay ordinance, it's done at the county level, where they add a fee to, um, license fees. So they have a pot of money to, um, not license fees, no, sorry, property taxes. And on license tabs, they add fifty cents to the license tab, and that goes into a pot for removal of junk vehicles. So if you have a junk vehicle, you just call the county and they come get it. And then it's paid for, the towing fees are paid for by, out of that fund. So there are other ways to crack this.
All right, sounds like a, sounds like a work session, to me.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, some of those, I mean, property taxes definitely, we have work control over. Um, the, I'm not sure that we could add additional fees to license tabs and collect those local fees, but that would be a question for our auditor.
The guy behind you.
All right, that's all I had. So what turned out to be a tooth thingy just.
Yeah, it's great though.
Yeah.
I love her.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's all I have. All right, thanks.
Thank you guys. All right, Mark, your turn.
Yes, and Kenzie's gonna come around and talk to us about public records.
Good morning, long time no see.
Good morning. Um, so I had Kami put together a briefing for me, just so that we could give you guys an update on the twenty twenty-four public records requests. Uh, so it looks like six hundred and ninety-three requests were received and completed. Um, the total staff time was eight hundred and three point five hours. Um, we do have a breakdown of the number of requests for the departments and which departments spent how much time fulfilling these. Um, the only other thing really was we did have, um, one litigation case that was settled for sixty thousand dollars. And that took approximately sixty hours of staff time. Um, because of our number of requests, our data has had to increase a lot with GoQA. And so we had to purchase an additional five terabytes of storage before the end of twenty twenty-four.
Projection on how much more we're gonna have to purchase?
I don't have a projection of that.
I mean, unfortunately, we receive a lot of any and all type requests, and we do have a retention period of two years. So before we can do anything with that, we have to hang on to it for two years. And then, you know, sometimes we'll get an any and all request from one person, and then five other people, well, I want all the information from that request. And we have to duplicate that.
Get a lot of that?
Often. I'm not too, too bad.
You just hear like from a friend or something, that's interesting.
A lot easier just to make a copy than it is to go research, go on the research go.
Yes, yes.
We have a portal, right?
Yeah, making it available publicly on the, on our, um, on our website would be the easiest way to do that.
Yes, and we do go through the review to make sure that departments are marking them as public. So anyone who, you know, goes online, they can see all the requests that we've done, unless they're maybe a, a human resources request. There are certain ones we won't publish due to confidentiality reasons. Um, but I'd say probably ninety-eight percent were, were working on getting published.
Yeah, that's awesome. Kami's nodding. Yeah, I know Kami sits right outside my door and I can just hear her going, okay, now this is how we do it. She's so patient. Yeah.
I think this is really good to have this type of data for the legislature.
It is.
So when they understand, they get, um, requests for changes in public records laws, they will go back and look at this information and, and be able to put a, a value to the cost of actually fulfilling a lot of these.
Can, could you send a copy of this to our legislators? Just an FYI? I'm sure they'd love to see it. Cause I know that there are some that are concerned with the amount of time and the cost and.
And we do report to J-Lark every year, so we make sure that they have all of this information as well.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how easy it is to dig down into individual, um, entities there. So maybe we can, we can send a copy of this to our three ledge, ledge folks.
Sure, with Dad also.
With Dad.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Awesome.
Cool. Thanks, Kenzie. PJ, you wanna talk about our cyber incident and kind of where you're at?
Yeah, so, uh, on the fifteenth, as you know, we had our, our cyber test. Um, all in all, I thought it went really well. Um, we learned quite a few things. Uh, we actually did end up taking down MaceCom unfortunately. Um, but I found that was a programming issue, so that has, that's been fixed. And it did kick off a good conversation with Joe Smith over there, um, about them getting their new building and the potential of them getting their own state connection that we could then run in parallel and piggyback off each other. Um, so, yeah, keep a lot more consistency there if anyone had an outage. Um, I know Kelly had an interesting find with some of the heating and cooling, uh, going into a safety mode and not coming back on. Um, so that was a good lesson learned.
An expensive lesson, yeah.
But now we know. Um, Mark asked that all, um, electeds and managers send in after-action report to me, uh, by the, by the end of the month. So, um, I did include those.
End of January or?
End of this month.
January.
January, okay.
Yeah.
How many, did you get back?
So I got a total of thirteen back, last one to see today. Well, it's a little muddled because some departments replied multiple times depending on their different roles that they have, yeah. So, um, I didn't include the actual responses, because I felt some of them are a little sensitive on what we do in that kind of scenario. But if, if anyone wants, I'm happy to send them to you guys if you have any interest to it. But, um, the departments that did respond are Health, Environmental Health, Commission, um, Sheriff, Budget, DEM, Facilities, WSU, Prosecutor, the District Courts, uh, Auditor, Elections, and Licensing. So that's one, you got three different ones put in, so thank you. Um, those that did not respond, MCRA, Clerks, Coroner, Permit, uh, Treasurer, Public Works. Public Works, she did send me something, but it wasn't really a complete response, so I didn't really count it. Um, HR, Probations, Superior Court, Assessor, and Court Defense.
I'm good. Those are directly, I already thought that maybe it's time for a, uh, administrator to say, no, it's expected.
Yep, yep. So they, uh, they were due end of last week.
Yep.
Uh, and we will, I will follow up with those individuals to make sure that we do get some documentation associated with it. So we know when the system goes down or when we have to take the system down, what it's gonna impact.
Reading through the ones I did receive, it seemed like everyone minds them. They all have a pretty solid plan, or at least now know what's available to them as the tools. And understand that, you know, we're not gonna be there to help them because we're gonna be busy, so.
But it's important if we ask them to do something, that it get done.
Yeah, aside from that, yeah.
Makes a difference to them. Like if the director or the administrator says do it, it needs to be done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So overall, I was very happy with the results. I think it was a success and we'll probably do another one at some point.
Yeah, I think, talk about being proactive instead of reactive. I love it, because it may have been an expensive lesson for some. But at least, at least it was learned. We figured it out and, so, I think it's a great idea to continue. It's not gonna get any easier.
It's not gonna get better.
No.
Now, the MRSC's waiting my, my report of how this went. I've been with them once a month and they were a little astonished we're doing this voluntarily, but also very interested how it goes, so.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll fill them in later in the month.
Who, MSISEC or MSRC?
MSRC.
Oh.
That's awesome.
That's cool.
Cool.
Mason County rocking it again. I like it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Well, and let us know if you, if you want us to help nudge other departments.
I'll let Mark nudge it first.
Yeah, I'll nudge him.
How am I nudging?
Yeah, send me the list and I can make sure I can reach out to those owners and get, and, and still have them turn in the information so that you have a complete list in your
Yeah, yeah.
book of what happens when we shut down.
Yeah, a few of those sound like they really do need to respond. We need to know about how it affected.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely beneficial.
Yeah. And, and it's neat that you're working with, uh, MaceCom.
Yeah, yeah, we've always had a pretty good relationship with them, so, um, they use a lot of our services, so. Yeah, it'll be exciting for them to get their new building and, and see how we can set this up to be a little better in the future.
Yeah, yeah. I might have somebody here that is on their board.
All right. So then I'm excited, what I have on my list here is to talk to you about an MOU between the Superior Court Judges, the Commissioners, approving this extra help juveniles for juvenile detention officers being compensated during holidays. So we actually briefed the board on this a while ago. Um, and we talked about the fact that juvenile really needs their extra help to come in during holidays because their staff wanna take those holidays off. And so they're really having trouble finding extra help that were willing to come in. So we said, hey, if, if you're willing to come in on, on these days, then we'll pay you time and a half. So the Commissioners had approved that before, but I don't think that we documented it clearly enough, um, to ensure that it would just apply to those. So there were some questions about that. I know that Nicole has been working with, um, both the Superior Court Judges and, um, the, the juvenile detention side of things to figure out how we, how we can make sure that this is clearly documented. And, uh, she's also worked with Tim to make sure that this MOU would, would clearly define that this just applies to those individuals working on and in our juvenile detention center. Most of our other departments and offices that have extra help would never have their extra help work on a holiday, so.
Right.
Is this discussion enough?
Unless you guys have questions.
Or action you're looking to do.
Uh, the action is gonna be that we actually approve the MOU.
Yeah, okay.
So you have the MOU in front of you that Nicole put together.
Reviewed by Tim.
Oh, Nicole is actually off this week, or the first three days of this week, so.
That was supportive.
Exciting stuff.
And Tim reviewed it?
He did review, yes, and has cited, so.
Seems reasonable.
Okay. So we'll do that, and that's all I had for you guys.
I got one thing, Mark.
You have elected officials? Sorry.
You have elected officials in director meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my individual.
I'll go while you're looking.
Go ahead.
So I got a, I got a text from Carnleaf over at EDC, and, uh, she would like, they're gonna buy a flagpole. They would like to put the county flag on that, flagpole. So, um, I told them I would ask to see if that was okay. If you guys would allow them to have a county flag, and if so, I would probably have them buy their own flag. I really don't have one to give them to put up, but I would give them the option where I get them and so they can fly a county flag. Yeah.
I think that's cool.
Okay, that's all I had. But don't leave. I got something for you.
So scheduling, um, wanted to schedule our first quarterly elected official, uh, director meeting and wanted to talk to the Commissioners collectively about topics that you wanted to include in that. So this time was set aside to actually determine a specific date and, and topics that you'd like to discuss.
For, uh, process, we wanted to make sure they all know that they have to follow our.
Policies.
Policies. And we need to clarify that and figure out what those were that we wanna make the changes of, so we can do it from this point.
And then every department knows that we've got a policy manual and it has to be followed.
And so specifically, are we talking about personnel policies? Are we talking about?
All policies that we put forward. Even though they're elected officials, we have policies that we run through as a county.
Correct.
The risk for them is there will be a finding with their name on it if they don't follow the policies that we put forward. We have that within our authorities and our duties. And some of that stuff we do in order to protect this county for the long term. So with that, they need to know that whenever there's a policy, they're held to it, regardless if they're elected official for something else. Now, if only I could remember why that all came up.
I know.
Well, I can think of a few off the top of my head that are related to personnel policies that are always followed by all offices.
Yeah, like remote work. I think that was one of them.
I think even disciplinary actions.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Yeah, grievance is discipline, we talked about all that.
Um, I think there was, one of them telephone, gosh, I can't remember.
So if there's other things that come up, I'm supportive of having the discussion.
One of the other things you guys wanted to discuss, I believe, is the budget and the status of the budget. Did you have any recommendations for ideas of how you wanted to present that?
For me, it would depend on information, and we don't have the information yet.
I just wanna, I'd like to just remind all the other departments that there's a budget, and if you don't spend it, please don't. If you don't have to spend it, please don't.
Which we do have some good controls in place at the Commissioners place ten years ago that it worked very well. Um, so operations and, and salaries and wages, two different budgets. They can only transfer fifteen thousand for most departments.
A good reminder for that, not be a bad idea either.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause some of these new ones may not even know, cause I know I had to explain it to at least one eleven, no, I didn't.
Just recently?
No, eight months ago.
Oh.
Well, you got one just recently?
So the other thing that we were talking about discussing is just really the status of the general fund and how it's budgeted in twenty twenty-five, um, to potentially dip into some of the reserves. And I think the Commissioners wanted to talk a little bit about that. Did you want Jen and I to present information regarding the status of?
I would rather see before, it, it has to do with timing for me. I would rather have the timing where we actually have the numbers that we can present to them to see where it's going. For example, we have so much money that we have budgeted, we have so much money in reserves, there are so many, uh, dollars that are unencumbered. Uh, are we dipping into those unencumbered yet in the first quarter? Or, you know, are we not? It depends on some of the things to have that discussion, will depend on what we're actually doing, not just, uh, cause we all know the way we set it up, there's a lot of hope that it won't go, get used, but the truth of the matter is sometimes it does, and we need to see if it does. I don't see how it doesn't, we, we went so far.
If we're successful and if we're, is successful with some of the decisions we made to increase the costs, uh, for the reasons why we did that, right, to attract more people to come to work for Mason County was a big one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, if we're successful in that, then you're gonna see that spending.
But at the same time, we also get the benefit of not going out for outsourcing because of that. So money in, money out on that one, but we have others.
Some of that, though, we utilize salary savings to pay for, right?
Actually, we pay for it.
Yeah, yeah, so it's just a matter of ensuring and, and I, I think that we're specifically talking about the jail, but the jail is, is doing regular updates with the commission about kind of how many people we have, how many people we're outsourcing. So I think that those are important to, to continue to work with our, our chief hands on.
And get regular updates, I think that would be.
Yeah.
Also, cybersecurity, I think, would be a good topic also.
Okay.
How would you like that presented?
Depends on when the meeting is, so if.
Is topical stuff or?
If you got more information, if you, suggestions, maybe, you know, a path forward or.
I would set this up sometime in March.
In March?
You know, what we've done in the past, we just run through it, we could barely get through it, you know, with each person. But there needed, the one thing that was missing is we had no opportunity for interaction. Some of them have ideas, I'd like to hear them.
Oh, man, so if, so are you saying more than, cause typically we have it, is it an hour, two hours?
And they give an update, maybe we don't have to have an update.
Yeah, so maybe make it, maybe make it a, a morning, wow, I doubt that we can get everybody.
But maybe we make it to where we give our presentation with our issues and then instead of their update, time for them, each department and elected office to talk about what they'd like to see. This way at least, you know, we get through the same timeframe, cause they get pretty bored too.
Yeah, and we're not talking at, we're talking when.
That'd be a good concept.
How about that?
Good.
How about the morning?
We'll get an agenda put together for that and we'll pick a day and get that on the schedule.
I can send out like a survey of what days and times work best and then go along with the majority.
Sometimes with that large of a group, I think we just have to set it.
Okay.
Just say this is the time.
We set it, here's the date, here's the time, and if you can't make it.
As long as you take my, my, my issues into account, everybody say the same thing.
Mental?
Okay.
Okay.
So I believe that's all we have.
Okay, yeah, I have a commissioner discussion that's, Kelly, on our, on our cleaning contracts and all these other contracts, historically, we have always given deference to different individuals, female, immigrant, whatever. How much of that is required by law? And if it's not required by law, how hard would it be to remove that and give equal, uh, opportunity to everybody?
I don't know. I know it is, it wasn't RFP, that you got a point system.
Yep.
And if you were a minority, you got a point or an extra point.
Yeah.
If you were a female owner, you got an extra point. Um, if you, I don't remember all the criterias, but there were extra point military with a point.
Would you consider, uh, equal playing field all the way around instead of individual points for individual subsections of the community?
Always.
Yeah.
Can you look into that and bring it back to us so that we can consider that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it would be, I got a two-year contract with, uh,
Yeah.
security left and the two-year with, uh, our cleaning people, but other than that, that's the only contracts I have, but I can surely.
But it'd be nice.
One where you won't go for the next RFP, take that out.
Yeah, and find other ones we can if the other commissioners are willing.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
And then we have three topics on their commissioner discussion, unless we have administrative updates?
Nope, I've given everything I've got.
You've updated.
I've updated, yeah.
All right, so we have our planning advisory commission interview review. Um, we had three applicants. And do you guys remember who they were? And if so, do you guys have a recommendation of who you like?
I would say Joel, now it's the last, Gilbert? The one thing about him is he's a worker, like, he does so many things at North Mason, he's just one of those guys that's everywhere. So I definitely would be supportive of that, at least, they'll get somebody that's gonna show up, that's.
You want something, you want something done, give it to a busy person.
Right, right, I, I'd support that.
Okay.
So Joel.
So that was Joel.
Joel, he's on the top. And I don't think I need those anymore. You can have them. You're welcome. All right, so then we've got our Mason County Law Enforcement Officers and Firefighter left, board replacement, thank you.
I do left, so, uh, so what, we don't have a board replacement, it was the idea of whether or not to have, uh.
Whether we wanted to move it or.
Have it underneath the, the, our commissioner staff or, uh, continue to have it underneath HR.
Placement, not replacement.
Right.
We currently have, we currently have it under commissions. We wanna consider putting under HR because a lot of the stuff they talk about are, uh, you know, health policies and, and other types of internal insurance.
Yeah, I, I talked to Megan about that also and Nicole. And I don't know why we couldn't put it under BOE and civil service, cause that person should have enough time.
Mary's actually online, Mary, do you have her thoughts to that?
I think we briefly talked about it before I left and either way was fine with us. And we're in the middle of, uh, interviewing and hiring for that position that'll become vacant. So it's, you know, just another program and what I remember when Mackenzie and I talked, it was basically another board to be staffed. There wasn't a super significant amount of investment of time for staff on it.
Okay.
Depends on the issue, but ninety percent of the time it's not.
Awesome, cool.
So does that mean that HR will begin clerking and we will just do, we'll just pay the bills?
Yeah, the person that, that does the BOE and civil service.
Except they don't have anybody in place yet, there should be a transition anyway because we gotta teach them what, what all it is, so.
And there, there would be a transition anyway because our person is going up to the treasures office.
All you people.
Perfect time.
Yeah.
We trained the best people.
So it looks like that's what you got, you got to put together and start the process and we'll work through it, so in the meantime, though, we'll just keep it the same.
So, okay, so that's what I was waiting to hear.
Yeah.
So meantime, keep it the same, but when we get a replacement for this position, work with Mary to include left board clerking, um, and, and providing guidance about healthcare benefits and those types of issues, um, for the future.
Yeah.
The new person, okay.
I like it.
Good.
And then we have the ILA with City of Bremerton. Just taking that one.
It's a meeting.
Do you wanna talk about that one?
Or do you wanna wait for another time?
Yeah, I, you know, I've, I've heard both sides and, uh, they're pretty heated on both sides of this issue, so. I need to, personally, I need to do more research in it.
Squaxon did reach out to me, again, they were really what we'd like to talk about, how this could affect, um.
I think it's all right to, it doesn't matter what Bremerton does, they're our tribe and it's our issues we'll be dealing with, it's ours. So I never could understand why you wouldn't be meeting with them, so I'm supportive of meeting with them and find out what they got staying.
Absolutely.
And help us make the decisions on stuff that we're gonna go anyway.
I wonder, cause I did get a request for a meeting, um, did you guys?
I did not.
No.
That's all you?
All right.
Was it, uh, you know, cause you're the chair, did you just get, cause you're chair and then?
Oh, and they're so close to it.
Was it from Squaxon itself?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, no, I did get something, I thought I got it from staff.
You got a letter.
Yeah, I got a letter, yeah, from staff.
Yeah, actually, I'm capable from Squaxon, but it didn't.
Do you wanna maybe invite them, I don't know, to have a discussion?
Good. Ask them if they'll feed us. I tell you, when I first started this job, they gave us king crab legs and everything.
Don't, don't ask them that more, we can feed ourselves.
I don't know, I want the king crab legs. I have one more that's not really, but it is, it's just a heads up. Uh, I've already gotten a copy to Mark, I got a copy to the sheriff. Uh, I expect now he's back, I'm gonna have one more meeting with him, one more meeting with the sheriff, and then I'd like to present the options on the animal control already. And they sharpened the pencil, they came back and, so as soon as I get to buy off on them, then I'm gonna give you guys a copy so you can look at it yourselves and see if there's something you think that we should be going for or covering, but you're gonna be pretty impressed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very happy, but no matter what.
I've heard about the, is this the first in town?
Yeah, but no matter what happens, uh, if we agree, we decide to do it and we decide, uh, cause there's basically three options. Uh, I, I don't see how we only, how we, if we just take the animals or, or let them take the animals, we still have a one and a half people in the sheriff's department, have to do all everything. If we go with the route where they take the animals and they do all the calls and they do five days a week. But again, I'll, I'll get you the whole presentation.
You do, yeah.
And, uh, then I think we save money, without a doubt, a huge amount of money, a huge amount of money in my opinion.
And a liability too.
And a liability, half, half.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
But, uh, they, they won't be able to do it because they have to go through their board and everything else, tell April. So I'd like to get it before you sooner rather than later so we can tell them yes or no, and, okay? But I, like you said.
That's exciting.
I wanna make sure that, that Mark doesn't have something like, oh, I don't wanna deal with that, or that the sheriff doesn't. He didn't, he didn't, but he hadn't taken it to, uh, the under sheriff yet.
Well.
You know how that works, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at the details. I, I attended a presentation with Commissioner Netherland and I, I guess the way that I personally look at it is something is better than nothing. We've had nothing for a long time. Uh, and to, to actually have the opportunity to utilize these resources, uh, from a neighboring county and, and for them to help us out, even if it's just a forty-hour work week that they help us out, um, that's better than nothing and it gives us an opportunity to then evaluate if we wanna expand on that in the future.
And if it's cheaper than having the highest money.
Well, a lot cheaper than doing it our own.
Yeah, cause that's just pretty.
And then finding a facility.
Yeah.
And finding the vehicles.
That was the hardest part, but they have one.
Yeah.
But I still think that we should have a discussion about how to take care of the one that's still here because we may have to work with them in the future. I'd like to see us look at getting grants with them for Humane Society to maybe build for the future. Uh, there's stuff they're still gonna be able to do in the meantime, it might be a small amount to a country, but that, right now, let's look at the first one and see if you're even interested, uh, if you are.
I wonder if they'll work with the Humane Society as well?
They were open to everybody and everything, and they actually do work with them already.
Yeah.
But that was the thing I liked about it is they were not exclusionary.
That's cool.
Well, some of them are, that, that, you know.
Yeah, they, yeah.
So just let me look at some dates real quick here, I'll have an opportunity to go through the proposal. So, oh, seventeenth, that's a holiday.
Well, let's not do it now.
Well, we wanna get back.
Do, do you wanna do?
Get back on the twenty-first.
You, oh, perfect, so the twenty-fourth would be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll give the sheriff a little more time just to make sure the sheriff was on board.
Okay.
I think it would be, cause it's.
Twenty-fourth.
If anything, they won't get.
And then that gives us time to get it on our regular agenda and for them, it gives us, gives them a month to.
Yep.
To go through their process too.
Just step back in that letter from Squaxon, they did say, we look forward to meeting with you, please contact me.
But if they look forward to it, it's at their house.
Yeah.
We're only allowed to give hot dogs. We're working with what we can do.
Lucy, what would Diane say? Commissioner? I'll have to get a recording of that.
I think Diane remembered how fun snow days were around here when, you know, everybody's wondering and asking.
Yeah.
We talked to Commissioner Trask at five in the morning and trying to figure out, you know, how do we move forward? And getting reports from all of our public work staff, which, um, I would like to put a shout out to our public works staff. They were out at one AM this morning, uh, treating our roads and, and they are in pretty good shape for his work.
People have no idea, I don't.
They really don't.
No.
Actually, they, today, they're, they're gonna be able to start going out into some of the communities and plowing, so that's, that's super positive to.
One of the first things I learned that surprised me a little bit, first of all, if you've ever been in a, uh, snowplow, when it, uh, what's the word it looks for, basically skids over the top of it, wow. Talk about no control with such a huge beast, cause it's over the top. We put stuff underneath it not to melt the snow, that's not it. Which is something that almost everybody thinks it's to be able to create a separation underneath so that the plows and even the vehicles can get to the bottom. That's why, and, uh, so people that expect us to put the stuff in the snow just disappears, it's not what it's for. It's meant to create a compartment underneath. And that's why I say, I wish, there's a name they have for it, but when you skid over the top of it, believe me, it's a pucker factor. It is.
Yeah, so I talked a little bit and I'm sure that Loretta's coming up for it, so she might be.
She's right behind you.
Okay. We do do a sand and salt mixture, um, the, the cool part about it is that they've, it, it, there's quite a science behind when you apply salt and, and when you just apply sand and I think that they're figuring it out and it seems to be working well.
What was it, the rods, or was it the Larue Slu or Slough?
Oh.
What do they call it?
They, I'm sure they can tell you all about it, yeah.
All right.
But that's all, yeah, is that all you guys had for us in the commissioner discussion?
So far, oh, yes, so we've got two positions that were, um, approved.
Which positions are you talking about?
Managers.
So IT manager and parks?
Yeah.
Okay.
How, what are we gonna do with them? So I thought we were going to, they were approved for the twenty-five budget, right?
They were approved, approved, they are approved for the twenty-twenty-five budget. Um, there was some concern about the budget and where it's at, and so how do we move on and move forward on that? We did go through a process of interviewing, uh, for a parks manager position and we didn't have anybody that rose to the, to the top with, we said, hey, this is a, is a great fit, um, have not opened the IT manager yet.
Cause I really think that with, with the path forward that we're going now with parks and the possibility of, um, Mason Lake and, and all of our parks are amazing, there's no reason, in my humble opinion, that we shouldn't be able to use money coming from people visiting our parks to maintain our parks.
So like implementing some type of a fee structure associated with park?
Camping, something.
We don't allow camping, I'm all for us having those conversations, especially.
Well, if we get Mason Lake, there's camping up there.
I would say so, but remember Diane wanted to kill us every time you mentioned that, but.
I know, but she's not here.
Nope, and I, I think there are a few others that that might be viable, somebody can, I think it's.
I think there's possibilities out there, in, in all of our other, I mean, weddings and so many other things, so.
And weddings pay for a lot, you'd be shocked, as a poor commissioner, I can tell you, you'd be shocked that they aren't really paying for weddings at these locations, and they should.
We have beautiful parks.
And one thing I was never able to get at the Port Allen when I was there, too much work, but I'd still love to see us, if we're gonna do this, have two fairs, one for those that live here in Mason County and one for those that are not.
Oh, you're talking, I was thinking of a different fair, I was thinking of a IR. Diane is really gonna.
Yeah, threw that one out of nowhere. So on, just on that, I'm always supportive of a fair as long as somebody else can do it. I have no problem with buying it, uh, but I'll just share with you, we lost, the county lost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars its last year. I wasn't even here, I came there right afterwards. But when you have a situation where FHA, FAA, no, FHA is saying, I'm mad at you because you put my hay over here.
FFA.
Future.
FFA.
FFA. Future for those that are. And stuff like that, you know, we failed, we were, they were mad at us.
I'm not talking about that type of fair.
Yeah, but if we did, I, all four of them talking about it, but with the idea that we lease it out and somebody else does it, not us. Government shouldn't be running that, we can't afford it, every government that does has been learning not to, because.
A lot of counties that don't wanna do it anymore.
Well, we got, we have to pay you, we have to pay, and we have to have somebody, people. I'm open to it, cause I'd love to have fair rounds, I just would like to see us contracted out. I almost got it contracted out.
Circling back to the park discussion, um, I have a.
She wants camping.
February eleventh, uh, is our kickoff meeting, um, with our, with our consultant that's gonna come in and help us evaluate, help us evaluate the, um, the possibility of Mason Lake, sorry, I looked at my surgeon, got a little confused. Mary, don't do that.
What are you doing, Mary?
You came up multi-tax.
Yeah, I'm not a good multi-tax, no. The, uh, so, so, yeah, that, that's starting off on February eleventh, so super excited. The, uh, so, so yeah, that, that's starting off on February eleventh, so super excited about that, I've invited um, members from the EDC, I've invited, um, individuals from our, our Parks Department and Green Diamond to attend those meetings. Um, hopefully with having that group of people there, then the consultants can get the information that they need right away and, and, uh, and provide some good results, February eleventh, that's one of my first kickoff meetings. Um, that meeting will determine how do we, what that structure looks like in terms of meetings going forward. I do expect that it's gonna take, I think they said seven, eight months to actually get through it.
To get through, and we need to make sure that Green Diamond also.
Yeah.
Yeah, are you in contact with them?
Yeah, and EDC is actually, um, our EDC director has actually looked at opportunities to find funding to help out with this and has some recommendations for us to move forward with requests to the legislature to, uh, to get some money on that, which are, I think, good things to, for you guys to consider.
Yeah, and, and don't forget, Green Diamond also was working with someone to be able to get funding.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
They were open to a little bit of time even.
We do have to have their requests soon, for a capital budget. I think the deadline is
Could you at least put in for the capital budget request?
I'll get to the deadline.
That, uh, the amount of money for that study?
To pay for the study.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's just tell them to do it. No, it's a, it's a no brainer.
I think that, I think the proposal was a hundred and twenty-five thousand is what they had requested. So if you guys are comfortable with that, I can definitely put together the information and get that off to Deb.
I am.
I'm good with that. Oh, yeah, three.
Wow, perfect.
Three on three?
Okay, and then Mary, did you, what did you say to me that made me look at my computer? Given authority, if they could
I can't be held responsible for your distractions, or anything. Um, no, I was just, back to the commissioner's original question about posting for those two manager positions, and I know Mark had struggled to find, um, applicants for the parks, but I don't believe we had even posted the IT. So just, they're approved, they're in the budget, we're, I mean, is there approval for, to go and post those, are we waiting for a reason that I missed?
That's what Mark said, he actually said that, that he hadn't gone out yet on the IT.
Yeah, but, um, it's in the, our budget, so I, I kind of assumed that that was the approval that you needed to post them?
I myself would prefer that we see the numbers first before going out and spending a quarter million dollars. Uh, the first quarter of our, of our funds. But it's up to you guys, I'm just
You wanna see first quarter budget results, to see where we're at before we
To see if we're bleeding, and if we are, how bad.
We have it in the budget. We approved it in our last budget, the present twenty-five.
I think the concern is that, is the twelve point three million differential of revenues and expenses, so.
And I understand that.
Wanting to, wanting to, the concern about how, the impact, if you, we go into twenty-twenty-six, having dipped into our reserves, are these two areas that we would want to cut right away? So, would we cut parks, uh, would we cut into IT? Those are, those are questions.
IT's not gonna get any easier. It's gonna get, or it's gonna grow, we have no choice. It, it's gonna get more and more expensive, so uh, well, my opinion is, they were in the budget, but there's two more.
Commissioners, can I say something about the budget?
Yes.
So, um, it's at a range thirty-eight, I believe, in the budget, and I think that the actual, um, came in significantly higher. So, um, the amount in the budget would not be sufficient, so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Right now, you got this halo thing going around you.
The sun must be on. The sun is hitting perfect.
She is that good, she really is.
Angelic.
The side to the left, just.
Yeah, CLACFACOM's at a range, uh, forty-sixth is what the CLACFACOM's study reflected.
And what did we put it into the budget for?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, what is it now?
It's approved at forty-six as per the CLACFACOM's study.
But it's in the budget as a thirty-eight, right, Jen, that's what you're saying?
Correct, because we didn't know where it would end up, so we just put it where the rest of the manager positions are, which is at a thirty-eight for the time being, when we adopted the budget. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, that it's in the budget significantly lower than what it probably would actually end up being.
Okay.
So again, I prefer to wait just a little while, see what it actually looks like. If we are gonna be doing cuts, that's probably one of the places where we'd look at it, especially since it's newest on, newest off. But also, uh, there may be other options such as, uh, different change in leadership, how we do it at IT and then bring somebody on the lower scale in, there's just some different options, but you are a hundred percent correct. The board did approve that in the budget, and I definitely am not fighting it, I'm just saying that I prefer if we just went a little slow and see what it's gonna be looking like, I think it'd be a wise move, cause uh, I, I hope I'm wrong, Commissioner, but I don't think I am. We'll find out since we see the numbers, because here's what it's gonna come down to. After this year, we'll be out of, best case scenario is we're only seven million instead of twelve, uh, backwards. If for seven million, we will be at no unreserved money, and we will have to for the next year budget into our, our, uh, reserve, that means we have to change our policy to allow us to use that and take that money, because we won't have anything else, and we'll still probably have to do cuts, so that's
Maybe, we don't know that for a fact yet.
Nope, we don't, that's why
And I don't wanna, I, I, what I'd like to do is send a message that we need to be cautious. Absolutely, don't spend where we don't need to, and then, see where we're at, but I'm one voice, you're one voice, Commissioner?
Well, having not had anything to do with the last budget, I, I tend to, I'm in a wait and see kinda mode too. I, I'd like to see where, where we are before we get into spending. You know, you guys were involved with the previous budget, I was not. So, I'm kind of, have to agree with Randy in this case, it's, it's better to wait for, you know, we're talking a month and a half. When do you, our angel's not on anymore, when do you expect that you'll have our fir- first full quarter information? Jennifer?
After they close March.
After they close March, yeah.
Yeah, um, typically, March is closed, um, you know, it'll be closed by, I mean, the seventh, March seventh, I remember.
That would give us a great idea of what's happening on a smaller scale, because one of the things to keep in mind is the money doesn't go out
April seventh.
April seventh.
April seventh.
Oh, yeah, sorry, April.
Uh, it doesn't come in and out like you would expect, there's times during the year where tons of money comes in, or tons of money goes out, it's just
Well, obviously taxes, you know, April and October, so we get a
But it's a good poll.
Yeah, but we, you know, I, and, and Jen does provide us, um, monthly updates on where we're at with budget, and so we can actually take a look at our big revenue sources, and maybe that's some of the things that we can talk about in our elected officials meeting is looking at where our revenue is and, and how does that grow and, and what does it look like? So, sales tax and property tax are our biggest pots of money for general fund.
That's true, it's a running thing of three to five years that we get to see go backwards. So you can see where, all of a sudden, we're backwards two million, we got a problem.
But you know, we don't know, I mean, I just was at some training last week, and we're there talking about the economic outlook. And the economic outlook right now, I think that the economists are kinda shaken in their boots, cause they really don't know what impact the tariffs might have, what impact that, um, you know, in terms of interest rates and, and where that's going and development within the United States, so there, there is some concern, um, about potential workforce shortages and and how are they gonna, how are they gonna do that? So there, there's a lot of these factors that are out there right now, where economists always tend to give you this, this is where I would guess, but now they're really thinking, this, there, there's a couple things that are pretty unprecedented that they don't have a lot of history to look at. How does that impact Mason County specifically? I don't know.
I really look forward to our March, uh, risk pool, because they'll have, uh, actuaries and stuff that are there that are giving us information that I would love to package and bring back, cause they're pretty darn good at it.
Are you going to that one?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
All right, I just got my room. Yeah, I don't miss those, cause they're, I learn a lot, I take all those classes.
So I will, I will hold off until our first quarterly review and then we can go from there on those positions. Is that what you mean?
Okay. All right.
That's all I've got for you, guys ready for public works?
Sure. Thank you.
We got them all warmed up for you, Loretta.
Loretta, I sent you something, did you ever respond, cause I can't remember what it was? Well, I kept waiting for it today, at the end of the day, cause I, I told them, I'll find out more Monday, so I have no idea what I
I spoke with you on Friday, it was about the
Oh, you came back!
Did you?
I was here last week too. Oh dang!
Yeah.
Good job, Kevin. Here, take your seat.
The RPMs, the buttons.
Oh, you got to come up to the table and sit back. You already answered the one, and I already got back to them.
Okay, I've got this, I've got this full spot right there.
You got that one. Boy, are they happy.
All right. All right, take her away.
All right, commissioners, we'll try and maybe make, we're way behind.
Please, yeah.
Yeah, so Kevin's got, um, the long awaited news release.
Yeah.
Free vouchers.
Yeah, uh, we got the free vouchers, uh, getting printed off right now, um, and they will be available the week of February eighteenth. We're gonna be passing them out with Youth Connection of Belfair and Shelton, and then along with down here, your commissioners' vouchers.
Yeah, you know, it's a nice stat.
I, I got you guys a nice number.
Yeah, I have that, that one group, Trash Mash, they always pick up, and they, they've been wonderful, you know, uh, who they are from. Mark White, which, yeah. Spectacular, they actually do good work for free for us, they pick up the stuff.
Yeah, it's wonderful, and then Environmental Health has their own stash that they utilize for their own purposes, so that's fantastic, and we also wanted to, um, recognize the value that this is under our contract, and, um, Republic Services provided that same value to the community, and when we entered in the new contract with Mason County Garbage, they were fantastic and continue to provide that. So, yeah, anyway, we're happy to continue that partnership and it's, it's been great, and certainly helps keep our community clean.
That makes me wonder if we're able to do some of those other things with, uh, having our group pick up.
Only the problem with those is it's a different topic, cause they haven't, in some cases.
Or they're picking it up, yeah, I guess it would be. Wait, you guys listen, we're talking about having something on the side where we have a little money put away, so we can go and have people pick up certain areas, but she's right, there would be areas where it'd be hazardous ways, we just have to figure out how to do that, but the stuff that's not hazardous to be able to, to dump, it would be big for us, if we even do it, we're just talking, it's just something that came out.
Yeah, so something for commissioners to be aware of, we were just taking a look at all of the grants that Department of Ecology provides for recycling, litter, waste control, and, um, something that I had not been aware of before, but unfortunately closes tomorrow, is a grant program for nonprofits and individuals for exactly those types of cleanup activities. And so something to keep in the back and make sure that we let those groups aware.
Tinesa, no?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll see.
And then, and that way she can be, it could be on her radar for the next time it comes out.
But with that, we probably have to say, Tinesa, please be open to working with some of our nonprofits, cause right now she doesn't actually have that as a directive from us. Our old role would be, she did all kinds of stuff for other people and stuff like that out there in the public, and after she left, two million dollars came in. But, uh, it'd be nice if they, if she had the ability, we, we've never given her the, the ability, it's all the same.
Keep the word bold, bold.
I saw the cringe, I, I, I thought it was a personal thing.
Well.
Previous, my
Yeah, for example?
Previous would be.
Yeah, and then as you're, as you're aware, the sheriff's office, um, also applies for funding, and that helps with the litter crew pickup, and that's a fabulous program. Right now, um, our team's in the process of reapplying for the Leswitha grant funding. That helps with our household hazardous waste material disposal and, um, and then also enforcement. So, we're doing our best to make sure we're maximizing those grant funding sources out there. All right, yeah, next up, the Road Levy Cert, um, this is a CRAB reporting requirement, and we're asking commissioners to sign the certification, so we can get that off to CRAB. And Steph, we, this is something that we often are working with, um, the budget office and making sure that we're reporting same, same information, so. Okay, all right, and then, let's see, Lovejoy has a request to set a hearing for Road Vacation.
We have Road Vacation number four twenty-two. And it is for the south half of the sixteen foot alley line, north of lots fourteen through nineteen, block eight. The north half of the sixteen foot alley line, south of lots twelve through thirteen, block eight. And all that portion of the twenty foot alley line, west of lots thirteen or fourteen, block eight, all in McReeby's first addition. And this was petitioned by Jesse Leachde's attorney. And this one, we would just be acknowledging that it's already been vacated by operation of law. And we are requesting the hearing date be set for Wednesday, March twenty-sixth.
Can you explain to our commissioner what that means about vacated by?
You're doing it back?
No, um
It's back in, they changed the law in nineteen oh four. And before that, they had session laws that were, if it wasn't open within a five year timeframe, it was automatically reverted back. Basically, we don't have any interest in it for, as far as the county is concerned, but we are formally acknowledging it to clear up the title.
But acknowledging it, not by giving it to them, or going through that process, we're just acknowledging that we're not standing in the way of it, that we agree that it was vacated by action of law might not be an open
Right, to clear the title on real estate.
When I first came in, it was a different thing, it was a battle with every single one of them that came on and made some people pretty angry, but at the same time, it's already vacated by law, so why would we argue about it? And so we switched to being, just acknowledging that it's already vacated, we just accept that, we're not fighting it.
Yes, so we're just requesting that we set a hearing for March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five at one PM.
I'm supporting.
Any questions? No questions?
Awesome, all right, that's it for our action items, commissioners. And we have one discussion item, but actually, that's on the laundry list, but I wanna throw out a few others that are kind of timely, that came after the briefing. And if there's a particular thing that you wanna hear, or a different order that you wanna hear them in, we'll try and make them all quick, or you can say, eh, forget it. Whatever, whatever your pleasure is. So one, um, as you know, um, the solid waste financial review, which you have in your packet. And then, just wanted to do a reminder about the cameras for snow, just kind of a general snow thing.
Been looking at them the last couple days.
Yeah, perfect, and then, uh, Richard and Kevin have some updates on our solid waste excavator repair and the Victor Creek Fish Project. Wanted to share with you a couple of bills and information that I'm planning to testify on tomorrow. Um, and then, just real quicky, a couple of IT items about web and the cyber response.
Well, I have to leave, so, so please
Okay, so
Throw them out.
Any, okay, any particular order?
Well, I'm, I'm, I was fortunate enough to see the financials at the SWAC meeting, so they're very, they're very good, but I have no preference.
I have no issue with the financials at all, I'm, I'm, the presented, I don't think we need to
Okay, any, any questions about that?
Seems pretty straightforward, bored over it all weekend.
Our numbers are clean, it was always that way.
Yeah, great, no, and hats off to, it's, it's Stephanie, obviously, and her team pulling things together, but Kevin and Richard also have a lot of that backup information. I know, sorry. Well, I know, so I got it. But they're both data maniacs, both of them, so feed the more data, they love it. So if you ever want to know anything statistic or trend-wise about how much our tonnage is going up, how much our recycling's going up, how that equates to how many tons of garbage we're producing per person every day, we're, we're not going in the right direction, folks.
I'll give you a quick pat on the back, because of the way you guys do, we don't do a lot of increases around here, and that is appreciated. And don't think it doesn't go unnoticed when we're not doing it, because I'm one of the people that do notice that we're not doing it when everyone else is. So just, a little pat on the back for you guys.
And then, maybe Kevin, if you want to just go through and show, this is a shout-out, I'll let Richard go for it.
This is really a shout-out to ERNR. You know, last, we briefed last week about the replacing, the boom broke in half.
As soon as we say okay. As soon, the day, the day out.
The actual boom broke in half, so we have an incredible ERNR staff.
Did you call and see if they're still interested in it from the...
They're coming up later today to do the valuation.
They should be there at 11, right? They're already there.
Instead of 50,000, they're gonna give us 12 bucks.
I think they're gonna be really impressed with it.
I don't think so, I think they might up with it.
Yeah, they did a really great job, the shop did replacing, repairing the boom.
Ralph DeLamater basically did work, all day, Thursday, Friday. Eric Grounds backed him up and took all the work that Ralph would have been doing. He had to take over what Eric was doing and coordinate the truck to move it around and stuff. It was quite an operation, but you know, on a slow day, we get about 600 pounds a minute coming into there. So yeah, it goes up to about a thou, right now, he's probably dealing with about 1,000 pounds a minute coming in to deal with, so it's definitely critical, and they did a wonderful job.
Nice weld, I'm jumping. My dad was a welder, so I have a very fond appreciation for it.
And the shop said we did not let up on the grease at all. Very well released, and the pins came in and out just fine.
My weld always looked like I was drunk, and I wasn't.
So yes, thank you to the, the mechanics, it was, especially on top of getting all of the snow prep ready, and I mean, it was just like a, you know, perfect storm of wonderful priorities competing.
We got the machine back up there again this morning, so they're up in, running full operation.
Kevin actually came in yesterday and steam cleaned it, so when they came to inspect it and value it, it's as good as it could look. So he did that on his day off.
Thank you, okay. So the other, just a couple of IT items, I, just a huge shout-out about the web improvements. We've been combing through and provided some feedback to the IT group, and it may sound like nitpicky stuff, you know, but please don't let that get lost in the fact that overall, it's just fantastic. And so hats off to, to them on that. We're excited for the rollout. And then the cyber attack after-action reports. We came prepared for the meeting to share that, and I have not forwarded up the actual documentation to...
Yeah, we know.
But we have lots of documentation. So we'll get back to TJ and team. But the biggest impact really was with our solid waste team, everything else, nothing. We went a little bit further and assumed that all communications were out, like, not just internet. So used that as an opportunity also to figure out what other backups we're testing out, kind of like next-gen walkie-talkie things and all kinds of good stuff.
Is that still even in existence?
Well, it's a similar type.
That was the best.
Yeah, I know. So that's exciting, and again, shout-out to Steph and her team. Basically, we were going old-school with credit card, you know, hand receipts because we, yeah, that was one thing that was definitely interrupted.
They're not registered cards anymore, so you can't do the knuckle busters.
They have to handwrite every single one, it's like, ooh.
Wow.
But it worked, it worked out good, those guys did a good job out there.
Yeah, and then just making sure the internal controls were maintained as part of that process, and so again, thank you for that. And then last, testimony with Commissioner Trask tomorrow with the DNR.
I don't think we have a time set for that yet, do we?
10, oh, excuse me, DNR is at 9:30, I believe.
It starts at 9, but I think that...
I think public comments around 9:30, 9:30 to 10:30.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, we'll talk about that in a bit, but we should have, they should have a time scheduled for us that they'll send us the...
Yeah, I did get a link this morning.
Oh, did you?
For it, yes.
Okay, I'm not.
Yep. Yeah, so Commissioners, I did share with Commissioner Trask, and I believe Mark, what I plan to testify, but if you're interested, happy to share that with you as well. And then House Bill 1529 was drafted by Representative Griffey, and that goes before the Local Government Committee tomorrow at 10:30, so I plan to testify in support of that.
And that's striking.
That is increasing, it's, yeah, it's, it's basically increasing opportunities for cities to work cooperatively with counties. So right now, there's a cap, and there's a process and all those good things. And so this does not count county force work as part of that cap for cities. And so, yeah, that is that.
Thank you for bringing that one up.
Just was talking with Dan, and he says, "Hey, that's a bill I think I can get passed."
Let's roll with that.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, one of the interesting things, I was looking for some data from AWCC on how cities, how close they are to that cap. Apparently, they didn't have anything readily available to track that, but for counties, CRAB always tracks that. And statewide, only, all of the counties utilize only about 10% of the cap, so the average of all of the counties. And here, in Mason County, in 2023, we were at 75% of our cap. So lots of county force work, and I think we're probably about the same or maybe even more in '24, so.
Good call.
Good job maximizing that. Yeah, it's a double payback for us.
Right, saves the county money.
Yes. All right, Commissioners, that's all, sorry to keep you late, Commissioner.
Do you guys have anything for...
Nope. I do not. She's actually gotten back beyond the actions I've had the last week.
Maybe we can send a refresher out as to where those cameras are so that other people can watch the roads too.
Yeah, I don't know, if you want to do that as some kind of, I'm not sure what, I did send it to Commissioners and Mackenzie and Mark with the links, but if we want some type of a...
Put it on our webpage, first of all, second of all, put it on our Facebook as well, and then, yeah, send this out, and I use the PUD ones, so we got our own, let's use them.
Well, we have access to the, I mean, that's the ones that we...
Because PUD and Hicknock.
Yeah, I use both of those, yes. But not through ours and stuff, I'm like, God.
But we could have a link to their link.
Yeah.
Yeah, which we do.
Yeah, good, good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to Commissioners' discussion tomorrow, if we make sense, you'll be testifying, comment, and attest. At 9, but I have to, so I'm waiting to figure out what time they say.
You ready for your first meeting?
Yeah, I'll be in there. It's all remote, so.
If, if she can't be in, Pat, can you sit next to me just in case I could just, you know, send you a note or something like that?
Sure.
We don't have a hearing, so you'll be fine.
Right, there's a process, we have to do a hearing.
There's eight, I think we've got 11 items on the action agenda, and no hearings, so it should be a fairly straightforward...
Hey, how come I still have to read the, the...
You're so good at it. Why, why break tradition?
That was always Tim, that's funny, Tim puts it on the thing, then he leaves, never comes back.
That's funny. All right, anything else?
I'm sure I move you adjourned.
Second.
We're adjourned. See you guys tomorrow. Well, I'm sure we'll see you in the hallway.